All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to call to order the meeting, this Planning and Community Development Meeting, and if you'll stand, I'll ask Commissioner Nicholson to lead us in the invocation.
And we pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you again for another day you bless us with, Lord. Lord, just thank you for the weather, and, Lord, right now, would just ask you to be with us as we conduct the county business. Lord, may we do everything that's pleasing to you. Lord, just ask for your hedge of protection on the way back home. And, Lord, just ask you to be with the Cox family as they go through the passing of a loved one in their life, Lord, and just give them strength for days ahead. Lord, just thank you for everything you've done for us. We ask forgiveness for we fail you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
You will remain standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, at this time, I'm going to ask for the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda. As is Madam Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh-huh. I think our microphone sounds a little weird, like there's a little reverb or some vibration coming out. The first item on the agenda is the public comment section. We have quite a few people signed up to speak. Each speaker is going to be allowed two minutes for public comments due to the time limit that we have, and that's still going to put us way over the time limit. So if you could condense your comments to two minutes each, appreciate that. I'm going to read this. "We normally have a 30-minute time limit, but we're going to extend it for this meeting. All speakers shall maintain good decorum and show respect and good manners. Vulgar language, profanity, inappropriate gestures, insults, personal attacks, accusations, and inflammatory language is prohibited." Now, the chairman of the board shall enforce these rules, and anyone not complying with these rules shall not be allowed to continue. "At the discretion of the Board of County Commissioners, may address public comments during the..." That's for our general county commissioner meetings, but if you will, when I call your name, come to the podium mic and state your name and address, please, for the record. And the first person signed up to speak is Mary Kink-Carey.
Madam County Manager. The proposed Dollar General in Pine Hall is unneeded, it is unwanted, it is unnecessary, and it's unsafe. This Dollar General is unneeded and unnecessary. The U.S. Department of Agriculture defines a food desert in a rural area as being 10 or more miles to a grocery store. It is five miles from Pine Hall to Walnut Cove and seven miles to Madison. Each town has grocery stores, pharmacies, and dollar stores. If anyone wants to patronize a dollar store, they're like kudzu. They're everywhere, including Madison, Maedan, Blues Creek, and two in Meadows. It is unwanted. Our little jewel of a community does not want to be blighted with a Dollar General. Our property values will not be held by the presence of a cheap prefab building stuck in a field. Putting a Dollar General at the intersection in Pine Hall is like putting a pig in a basket of kittens. The intersection of 311 and 772 in Pine Hall is of great concern, especially at peak times of day with the shift change at Vealand and Duke Energy. Traffic to a dollar store, even with the entrance on 772, will increase congestion and compromise safety. Again, this store is... proposed store is unneeded, unwanted, unnecessary, and unsafe. And may I also add that the developers are here because they want to make money, as do the folks at Dollar General. This is not about helping the people in Pine Hall, it's about helping their bottom line.
All right, our next speaker is Joseph McHugh.
Madam Chair, if I may, is that mic on?
We just changed the batteries in it. Yep. And I turned it up a little bit, one down.
Thank you.
My name is Joseph McHugh. I live at 3245 US 311, Highway North in Pine Hall, North Carolina. I'm just here speaking about the Dollar General. I'm also against the Dollar General, just for personal reasons, and speaking for myself and for my family and friends. I lived in Gopher County for about 15 years before I moved to Pine Hall. We've been here about seven years. We specifically moved to Pine Hall, Stokes County, for the rural, for the country area. That's where we wanted to raise our five children, and that's why we moved here. I still work in Gopher County. We have several friends and family that work in Greensboro. We travel from different areas in Stokes County, but some of them Pine Hall. We go to Gopher County, Forsyth County, we make money, and we bring it back to Stokes County to spend there in taxes, retail shopping, grocery, you know, to fix our cars. And I drive an hour and a half round commute to get to my work, and specifically because I want to live in a rural area, and I don't want to live in an urban or city environment like Gopher County or Forsyth County. So I'm against the Dollar General in Pine Hall and 772 and 311. Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Irvin Riley.
Madam Chair, I got a text that the video's not going out. Has anybody else got one?
We had trouble with that last time, too. You check message IP and see what the problem is. Well, yeah, we'll get them to text. It might be whatever's going on with the mic sound, too. Last time, we had trouble with that. It recorded, but it didn't...
Okay.
...letting go on out loud. Yes, sir, sorry.
Okay. My name is Irvin Riley. I live in the house where the future sign of the Dollar General's going to be. My wife just recently died a few months ago. She owned the land that is going to be used for Dollar General. She's a black... was a Black woman. Her grandmother donated the land for the fire department across the street several years ago, and her aunt donated the land for the urgent care medical facility. And they also donated the land for the church parson. I think a Dollar General will be an asset for the community. A lot of the people that live on my end of Pine Hall are over 50 or 60, including myself. I've got a little bit of a disability, so it would be convenient not to have to drive 10 or 12 miles to a grocery store or whatever. It seems sad that you've got to drive to Madison or Walnut Cove to get a mop or a broom or a lighter or whatever. So I think it would be an asset for everybody in the community. So I'm hoping to persuade you guys to kind of go with the right decision. I don't see any danger or anything as far as traffic or anything like that. There's quite a bit of traffic on 311, yes, but I haven't noticed any abnormalities or anything of that nature with the size of the entrance to the Dollar General is going to be on 772 side, not on 311. Hopefully, you'll do the right decision.
Okay, thank you so much. Next speaker is Kathy Taylor.
Hi, I'm Kathy Taylor. I've lived in Pine Hall all my life. I'm disabled, I'm actually legally blind, so I don't drive. So the Dollar General would help me out a lot, because I have to get somebody to pay me to get groceries or anything I need. So I think it would be a good thing. I don't see where anybody would... it would be any problems with the traffic, no more than it already is. I've lived there all my life, I've seen stores close. Preston Brothers, if any of y'all ever remember that one, closed down. Wayne Williamson's store closed down. Pine Hall brick moved to Madison. We do have Vealand or Covey or whatever that is now in the doctor's office, which I am glad to be in. But hopefully, we can build up Pine Hall a little bit. I've seen Sandy Ridge build up, they've got Family Dollar, Dollar General. They're booming, and they get a lot of business. Everybody up there loves it. So I don't see what would be a problem with it. Thank you.
I came to Pine Hall in 1957, and I've seen everything, every store closed. And now the time at the school closed. The Black woman is the only one that's trying to help Pine Hall. So I don't see anything wrong with a Dollar General. I'm 81 years old, and it's more than five miles to Walnut Cove, and it's more than five miles to Madison. I go check. And I go to my doctor's office across the street over there, and I love it. And I think Pine Hall needs this, and I would appreciate very much if you would let it go through.
Tommy and Karen Delp.
Hey, y'all, I'm Karen Dels from Walnut Cove, actually, but I grew up in Pine Hall. I didn't realize that.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, that looks a little old sounding, but y'all call me up. I like the Dollar General mainly because of the seniors in that area, and, you know, I go through there constantly with my family living there, so I'd just like to see it. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Derek Goddard.
I'll put off my presentation until the...
All right, all right. Pam Hooker.
Hey, guys, how are y'all? Good. I am Pam Hooker. I live at 1075 NC 772. I think I'm the closest to this, other than the gentleman that'll be living right beside it, to the property. I do not support it one bit. The reason for being, I've been at this location for 31 years. We have had many wrecks at this intersection, with fatalities that have happened at the intersection. The interest they're talking about turning off a 772, it's a straightaway. People love to turn the corner or come out of the curve and see how fast they can go and qualify them cars up through there. They're going to create more traffic problems there. My next concern is toward the drainage system that they had proposed. It's experimental. How's it going to affect our water? What about the residents? Is our wells going to go dry, or are they going to pull the water from us? What's going to happen? Nobody's given us information regarding that. The next concern is the Dollar General. They tend to draw the traffic that we don't want. I don't want them in my house shopping when they left the Dollar General over at my building. It brings in crime. We need to keep the drug control under control and the crime we do not need in our area. So please consider the crime that you're going to bring to our area. The next thing is, there's 16 of them in our county. Do we really need 17? We can be at five within 10 minutes. Madison, Maedan, Blues Creek, Dodge Town, Sandy Ridge, and Walnut Cove. We have them within our radius. So please take into consideration. The next thing is the low income that this retail store brings in. They don't support our tax people. They hire people part-time, and they pay them only minimum wage. There's no growth for our community. This is not going to bring growth in taxes and good stuff to our community. Food line is seven miles up the road. I just hope that you reconsider your decision, don't let this go through. Let's put our money into our Pine Hall Elementary School, into our fire department, and support that. Thank you for the job you all do.
The next speaker signed up is Laura Holloman.
She's also with the presentation.
Okay, all right. Ken Miller.
Also.
Okay. Luann Atkins.
I'm Luann Atkins. I'm not a public speaker. Living 3557 US 311, Highway North, Pine Hall. And I love Pine Hall, I love Stokes County, and I'm also for the elderly shoppers. These stores are hazardous to their health. If you're in a wheelchair, you cannot even get through one. I have pictures, they say they will keep the outside... this is the outside of one that Terrible owns in Blues Creek. The fence has fallen down, the grass is taller than the fence, and this is the emergency exit. It is totally blocked, totally blocked. You tell me an elderly person needs this store? I don't think so. Thank you.
Man. Sorry about that, I can't see back here.
I've got a whole album of them. These are just the ones that... the main ones. This is the fence.
You're fine.
The fence falling down. This is the grass next to the fence next to one house on the side. This is the elderly woman lives down here, and this is looking up at the back of Dollar General. This is on this woman's property. And that's one... another house by theirs beside the Dollar General. This is the fire exit.
Okay. Does anybody else need to see these? You've got better eyesight than I do.
I was wide-eyed.
See there.
Say thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Janet Roberts.
I'm Janet Roberts, and I thought we were just signing in for your information, so me and the next three would like to pass, please.
Okay. So that takes us to Ann Hall.
No, I'm one of the ones who didn't want to talk.
Oh, you were one of the ones that didn't want to talk, okay.
I don't think she has a choice, if she signed up, Ann Hall's got to speak.
Okay, I got you now. Okay. Deanna Sizemore?
No, we just thought we had to go.
Oh, okay. All right, no problem. Let's see. Diane Brown? No, she's...
Dionne. Dionne's with Davenport.
She's with you?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And John Davenport?
He's with us.
Okay. Daniel Allman?
Yeah, I'm African.
Okay, got you, okay. Randy Hawkins?
Actually, Hankins, but that's okay.
Oh, sorry. I see that now.
I just wanted to say Randy Hankins, 217 Liberty Road. Obviously, I support having the Dollar General there. What is sometimes disturbing is to have people making statements as though they're fact. Just because you make a statement does not make it a fact. And so you hear things like, "It's unneeded, it's unwanted, it's unnecessary." Does not make that a statement of fact. You can't have a handful of people speak for the majority. That does not make any sense at all. And I think that you're going to see quite a few people here tonight that are actually profiling when you start talking about the customers that would come in would be low income, that they would be causing crime. Those are not statements of fact. When they say it's going to increase the traffic, that's not a statement of fact. In fact, I'm pretty sure that you're going to hear tonight that just the opposite is true, that it's not going to increase your traffic. The Dollar Generals don't operate as a destination. They operate as a convenience. They operate because they are able to provide a lower price point, which helps out a lot of the people in the community because they aren't on a fixed income. It helps out a lot of people because they are disabled, and the convenience factor is huge. And I think that as a direct result of having the Dollar General in this community, you will see that a lot of people do benefit. As you can probably figure out, Dollar General is probably not guessing whether or not this is a good location. If what these folks were saying were true about it being unneeded and unwanted, every Dollar General would fail. And there's obviously too many of them. They are all very successful because they do fulfill a need in the community. Thank you.
I didn't hear what town he was from. He's from North Carolina. Is he with Dollar General, or is he part of the community?
That's Rockingham County.
I reckon... I am a real estate agent.
It's Rockingham County.
All right, the next speaker, I think it was you that signed up, but you're passing. Okay, Mike Foul.
I'm glad to see y'all, and I appreciate y'all listening to this. Our community needs a Dollar General. We have older people, older generation that needs throughout the county, in the eastern part of the county, and we've got a health care center there, we've got employment there. We, you know, we're real close to... close to Blues Creek community, and it's over 350 houses within a five-mile radius of this location. And, you know, I know you think, well, you ain't got to go but seven miles to another Dollar General, that's okay, but when you're 80, 90 years old, traveling that far, a person can ride a half a mile, a mile down the road. And I think this would support the Pine Hall School, it would bring in... where if Pine Hall School needs something from the Dollar General, they can run up the street and get it. Covey Copper, Vealand or Covey Copper, they can ride up there and get it. You know, even the health care facility, they can just ride up the street and get what they need there. And the people in the community, it's not going to bring people from other parts of the communities, because they've got a Dollar General. Pine Hall will have that. It was five stores with... it was five stores in that community years ago. It's not even a store in that community that you can buy a household product. The people struggling, the older generation, that's... I can go get it, I can ride a few miles, but the older generation can't travel. I want to thank you, Boris, Andy, Ronnie, Wayne, Sonia. I appreciate that you all did this community out.
That's all the... all the people that signed up to speak, and we're right about our 30-minute mark. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak that didn't sign the paper? Okay, all right. We got one? Okay, go ahead, sir. Just come and state your name and your address, please.
My name's Steve Hamlin. I live... I have a property in Madison, but I own property in Stokes County, off of K-4 Road. So one of the gentlemen was talking about facts. So I'll present you with a couple of facts. The store in the Dollar General store in Vealand recently closed, and I think it was for two weeks, because they had emergency exits blocked. You can't even walk through the store to get whatever you're going to need. And I can say factually that that happened, they were shut down by the county. And factually, I've probably been to every Dollar General store, Stokesdale, Blues Creek, with the exception of Sandy Ridge, and all of them are the same way. They're full of 50-cent items and dollar items. You can't even walk through the stores. You can barely get out the door. They don't put anything away, and that's a habitual problem with every Dollar General store I've ever been in. And I think, long-term, instead of providing a dollar item or a $2 item or whatever and paying somebody minimum wage, let's try to bring some jobs into the Stokes County area, and even Rockingham County, that provide more than a minimum wage. Let's support local. If this store was not a Dollar General, and one of our friends was opening it up, a farmer or somebody that had a business or whatever, I would support local. Dollar General is not local. They're local to you, but everything that comes from a Dollar General is made overseas. 99.9% of everything in a Dollar General is from China, is from Japan, it's from wherever it's from, but it's not from the United States. We are... we're killing ourselves by buying foreign stuff.
All right, that concludes the public comment section, and we'll start our public hearing, and I'll turn it over to David Sutter, Planning Director.
All right, you've got your agenda and your packets in front of you. Some of you have diagrams of the store, or the proposed store. And the very first thing, we are looking at, the request is from Term War Development to rezonate approximately three acres of a 27.37-acre tract owned by Emily Kelly Riley from residential agricultural to highway business conditional zone for a retail store. Now, it's all been said what this store is, but from a zoning perspective and the planning, we look at this as a retail business, and a retail store with no particular name. So I will not reference in my presentation. I look at it strictly from planning standpoint for a retail business at this particular location. And as stated before, you all know where the property's located, at the corner of US 311, Highway 772, Pine Hall Road, in the Pine Hall community, in Beaver Island Township. The property is located outside of any flood plain. It is located in the WS4 watershed, the Dan River watershed, and that requires any development proposal would be a 36% built upon requirement for the watershed district. Septic approval, I... there was a soil scientist report that went with the original proposal. It was followed up by a Baco pits, accompanied Brandon Joyce and Cole McKinney, and as they did the soil evaluation on the property, and they found the soil suitable for the proposed use. An improvements permit and construction authorization has been... is available with particular conditions for any development on that property. Your emergency services, Stokes, Rockingham Volunteer Fire Department with inside of this area, and Walnut Cove VMS. Erosion control is more than one acre is graded, that would become applicable at that time. The access, the applicant is applied for a commercial driveway access permit from NC DOT to the proposed location located off NC Highway 772. If you look at your site plan, you can see their proposed location for that. I have average daily traffic count that I've provided for you. The applicant has also, I think we emailed out, a traffic study in the area. I spoke to Jeremy Guy, who's a traffic engineer with NC DOT, and also Thomas Scott, who is a surveyor and works on driveway accesses. As you can see in the average annual daily traffic count, US 311 northwest of the intersection toward Walnut Cove is 3,900 cars. US 311 northeast of the intersection toward Madison is 3,700, and NC Highway 772 is 1,400. After discussing it with DOT, I asked them about the proposed location, would there be any traffic or turn lanes that would be required, and based on their information, the proposal that this did not warrant any additional traffic measures at this time based on the traffic counts. So that's what I got from NC DOT. The surrounding land use at this intersection, as you well know, this mixed commercial, residential, and agricultural use from Walnut Cove to Madison along 311... and agricultural use from Walnut Cove to Madison along 311. And there would be more residential up Highway 772, but there are mixed uses along these North Carolina highways and a US highway. Also, the same basically at Pine Hall going down, you don't have much commercial down that way anymore. As previously stated, the old stores have disappeared. The closest one down that way would be like Smith's Grocery on down Pine Hall Road. The... There are six commercial districts located within two miles of the proposed site, five of them along US 311 north. And that would include, like Veiling Copper is an industrial site. Previous rezonings in that area, back in January, we did, for the Cisco's, you did a trailer sales for horse trailers that will be developed. There used to be Fry Heating &amp; Air. It's Marty Bullins's Bullbacker Motorcycle Shop is right down heading toward the county line. Issues to consider, as always, this is a conditional zoning application. You can ask questions in detail about it. Again, I'm going to refer to it as a retail store. The following are planning perspective from the proposed request. You have a location at the corner of two primary thoroughfares in the county, US 311 north and NC Highway 772 and Pine Hall. Things to consider, location on highways with mixed uses residential, commercial, industrial properties, potential tax base increase due to commercial property, potential sales tax increase from retail sales, potential employment opportunities, support of county's business-friendly objective, need of services or commodity provided, increased traffic in the vicinity of the proposal, and of course, community impact and acceptance. These are all standard, fairly standard issues to consider in any type of retail development My comments is the staff. Again, the proposed site is situated in an area that would be suitable for commercial development based on the existing development patterns in the area. I have a corner at a major intersection. Those are typically areas that we look for commercial development. As you go on into the, looking at the 2035 comprehensive land use plan, you'll see there are business, 12 business nodes that are located throughout the county. And again, Pine Hall, Sandy Ridge, Lawsonville, these are areas where considered business nodes. Anything outside, say, a mile or these are typically is low-density residential development. And if you look, that's pretty much the standard pattern of development throughout the county. From that standpoint, it seems to fit into the land use plan that this is an appropriate area for commercial development. The planning board recommendation, recommended by a vote of four to three to deny the rezoning petition by Terramore Development to rezone to three acres for a retail store. Reasons given for denial include traffic concerns and community concerns. At this point, do you have any questions for me concerning the development? You also have pictures of the proposed development, a site plan. You have a lighting diagram that shows that all proposed lighting would be retained onto the property. There was a question about an experimental something, erosion. I don't... I'd like to address, I'm not sure what that was, but this is a conventional septic system. It's just pits. It's not anything special that's not currently done throughout the county. If that's what someone was referring to.
Okay. We'll start down here. Go ahead, Andy.
David, do you remember what the traffic count was on Route 8 and 704 when those Dollar Generals were built in Lawsonville and Sandy Ridge?
No, Andy, I don't.
I mean, just by looking at it, it kind of looks like it's about the same or higher, correct?
Yeah. A US highway would probably have more traffic, 311, and based on the amount of just, you know, you sit out there and look, there's a lot of traffic coming down 311. A lot of people commuting back and forth in that area. Would be less people safe in the Lawsonville area commuting up to, from here to Walnut Cove to Virginia.
Right. But as far as that, like an intersection where the entrance was, traffic count was still like what we have right here. Was it 1,400? Yeah, 1,400 on 772. So Route 8 and 704 see those every day and not a whole lot more.
And these numbers, and just to clarify, I've told a lot of people that have called me, I've just explained what I've got, the information that I can get from DOT. These numbers are a bit dated, but the, when I discussed it with them, they stated that because of the pandemic, the numbers actually went down because less people were on the road, which makes sense. There were less people out for the last couple of years. So they felt these numbers still had accuracy and validity in what is proposed. So I don't, you know, as far as new traffic studies by DOT, I don't know when the next one would come from them, but they did feel that these numbers were consistent and still valid based on the current situation.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions till after the next presentation. I don't have anything for David. Any questions at this point?
Okay. Do you have any?
I don't.
Okay. I don't think I have any for you. Are we... Let me get my agenda here. So this is discussion, and so what are you referring to the next?
And there're gonna be another presentation by...
The applicant is here.
About Dollar General or about another? You're talking about about Dollar General?
Uh huh, yeah.
Is there more?
Like, for example, we got, we were provided a traffic study that I don't think went to the planning board, and I'd like to hear about that, for sure.
Well, the applicant is here.
Okay.
And again, there is a traffic study that you were emailed on Friday that I did not get until after the agendas were out. And yes, the planning board was not privy to this information at the time. But the developer is here, Terramore Development is here to answer questions about their retail store proposal.
All right. If we could hear from him now, that would be great.
Good evening. I'm Nathan Duggins. I'm here on behalf of Terramore Development.
I appreciate y'all's time this evening. As David lifted up, we're here to answer questions. We've got a number of people here. I'm gonna try to be respectful of your time. We want to talk about traffic. We want to talk about zoning and planning. We want to talk about Terramore and Dollar General. And I'm gonna walk you through who we're gonna have up here tonight to speak. I'm gonna ask everybody to be brief. We're also gonna talk about crime. I didn't want to forget about that. Ken Miller's here to talk about that. But let me just walk you through who we're gonna ask to come up and speak. Daniel Almazan is here. He's with Terramore. So he'll be able to answer questions about their developments in other communities and this community. And he'll speak first. Our second speaker will be Laura Holloman, who is an AICP planner. So you can ask questions about planning. She's got a few comments she'll make. Our third speaker will be Ken Miller, former chief of police in the city of Greensboro. Can speak about crime. Perhaps our all-star speaker will be John Davenport. John is a longtime traffic engineer, has studied this interchange and really the entire community. And he's the gentleman who produced the report that Mr. Morris referenced. And then finally, Derek Goddard's our engineer. I'm not even gonna ask him to speak, but he could speak if there's questions about the septic system or the site plan itself. We can ask Derek to come up. So with that, I'm gonna ask Daniel to come up, speak a little bit about the development, and then you'll see those folks that I just mentioned. And then I'll wrap up at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. And assuming...
That's only for public comments. This is the presentation. I think it's...
I was wondering if you could speed round.
No, this is your presentation, so it's fine.
Well, Daniel Almazan with Terramore Development. I do site acquisition. Terramore Development is a commercial developer, and we build developments for national tenants in North Carolina, Georgia, and Florida. And so obviously, this is a proposed Dollar General. Over the last five years, as I've done, we work in 23 counties and our offices in Salisbury, North Carolina. I've had the opportunity to speak with community members of, gosh, hundreds of community members. And over the years, you get just all these questions, and they really fall into three categories. Very simple. You've got the first category, which is NIMBY, not in my backyard. And I get that. You always have owners who, it's always been a field. I want it to stay a field. I don't care. I just want it to stay the same. And in those cases, we always rely on the county. Meaning that, in this case, Stokes County has put energy resources into coming up with a comprehensive plan. We meet with staff, and we find out, is this an appropriate use for this, based on your planning? And he agreed that a retail store that would provide goods and services for the media community was inappropriate. And so we moved forward with an application. Next thing, our legitimate concerns, whether it be safety, whether it be crime, whether it be, obviously, traffic, whether it be septic system, setbacks, lighting, buffers. And we've got experts that are gonna discuss their findings and be available for questioning. And then the next final category, and that's where I come in, is that there are tenant-specific questions. Obviously, this particular store, if I can give you a layout. This is a proposed Dollar General fresh. So this is a new concept. It's a larger store. It is a grocery store plus the existing Dollar General merchandise that you typically see. This would be the first one, as those count. And so just to kind of throw some numbers, as you're scanning through there, this would have a tax basis of about $1.5 million. It would have a annual sales projected at about $1.2 million. Typically, these stores have about seven to nine full and part-time employees. One of the things that's interesting about this location, because of how close we are to Rockingham County and our shopping, our lack of shopping options here is, is that the closest shopping for groceries is actually in Rockingham County. This is an opportunity for us to keep those tax dollars and those goods and services here in Rockingham, I'm sorry, here in Stokes County, and as well as providing some local job opportunities. And in fact, speaking of job opportunities, when unfortunately, with the internet, with social media, even with liberal media, it's not unusual that there is a cancer culture. And from that, what I'm saying is, is that there's a tendency to have that, I don't, not only do I not want this here, but I don't want my neighbors to have the access. I don't want them to have the opportunity for the store. I don't want them to be able to shop. And the problem is, is that it makes it out as Dollar General being evil company. So let's talk about Dollar General as a company. They provide, like in terms of their community initiatives, they, this past year, provided $9.2 million to the National Literacy Council. They have donated 60,000 books to elementary schools. They provide granting opportunities to not-for-profits and schools and the communities that they serve. They have done 60,000, I'm sorry, $300,000 to Red Cross in light-kind exchange, in light-kind contributions. And even within their own staff, they provide employment opportunities and immediate benefits like healthcare, adoption benefits, family leave, and tuition reimbursement. So it's important not to view Dollar General as an evil entity. They just provide goods and services and value-based products to customers. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions and let the rest of the team present their information.
Do we have specific questions for him, anyone at this time, or are we gonna continue?
I'd rather hear them all and then...
Okay. We'll just keep on with the presentation, and then we'll follow up. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Laura Holloman. I'm a practicing professional planner now from the Cavan's Company in Durham. I graduated not far from here, just up the mountain from Appalachian State, with a degree in Town and City Management, 2005. And I've worked as a planner for over 17 years. I'm a certified planner from the American Institute of Certified Planners since 2012. So let me walk you through what my daily job is as a planner and my analysis that I do whenever I receive a rezoning phone call. Anytime a landowner becomes before me and wants to develop their land, my first answer is, my first question is to consult the land use plan. What does the land use plan say? A land use plan's purpose is to be a guiding instrument. It directs future growth to be in keeping with high-level county goals such as limiting sprawl and preserving farmland in appropriate locations. Prevents you all from making haphazard decision-making based on development reactions rather than sound planning principles. In fact, comprehensive plans are so important that it's a state law for every municipality to have a comprehensive plan that's up to date. You all have done a great job with that. You have a 2035 adopted land use plan, which your planning director mentioned. There are 12 rural neighborhood commercial nodes identified in your community throughout the county. These nodes were created to encourage commercial growth towards major intersections. Well, guess what? This parcel is located at one of those. It's located at the intersection of two major highways and a state secondary road, of course, which is within the Pine Hall commercial node. The second thing I look for is, okay, that's what the land use plan says. How do we make that consistent? The rezoning request tonight is to rezone to highway business, which is directly in keeping with the future land use designation of this property, to be within the Pine Hall commercial node, as your planning director stated. This zoning proposal will allow the implementation of this vision statement by rezoning property within one of the strategic designated nodes for commercial development. It is literally the private development doing its work for you by implementing the county's adopted plan for future growth and development, which is how, exactly how you want a future land use planning process to work. By sticking to the plan and adhering to the principles that were vetted and agreed upon by you all previously, you're not having to rethink the whole framework and other important principles like maintaining residential land and farmland. The county doesn't have to give up or shift with any other ideas to make way for this proposal. You've already created it with your land use plan by saying exactly where you want commercial and retail to go. The other thing I look at is establishing sound planning principles. A well-established and longstanding, successful development pattern is to focus intensity around an intersection and to gradually step down the intensity as you transition away from the intersection. In other words, the intersection is the epicenter of intensity. This is exactly how your land use plan acts, by having commercial utilized at key intersections. Additionally, as also mentioned, the provision of a neighborhood servicing retail in rural areas that's established in limited nodes or activity centers. This eliminates sprawl by establishing it at key corridors. It allows you to preserve open space and/or other farmland and minimizing traffic congestion. Again, this is a principle embraced by your land use plan. This concept has invited this level of retail at this location to request like this is one, putting those building blocks into place. Neighborhood supporting commercial uses are appropriate in predominantly residential areas because they solve the residents' day-to-day needs. You've heard a lot about residents who need nearby neighborhoods to more supporting retail like this. This is, addresses day-to-day needs as opposed to destination-oriented commercial, which draws from more regional and long-distance commercial customer bases. So your decision tonight is about implementing the land use plan and taking a step to establish the commercial nodes as identified in that plan. We've talked about, both myself as well as the planning director, how this plan is consistent with your 2035 land use plan. When you analyze this under that metric, this is without a doubt a reasonable request for rezoning for all the reasons I have reviewed. Thank you for your time tonight.
Good evening. My name is Ken Miller, and as I was introduced earlier, I retired from the city of Greensboro as a police chief in 2014. I am currently the president of a long-established private investigations and security consulting firm based in Huntersville, North Carolina, US ISS Agency. We are located at 13801 Reese Boulevard West, Suite 180 in Huntersville. I've served our communities, Charlotte, Mecklenburg, Greensboro, and quite frankly, a number of municipalities in this private investigations company for the better part of 30 years now. And I've led and effectively reduced crime in communities and in patrol divisions, large and small, throughout all those years. Our firm has been retained by Terramore Development periodically over the past couple of years to evaluate crime impact from Dollar Generals. I can tell you in that time that I have looked at Dollar General's... I can tell you in that time that I have looked at Dollar Generals in Union County, Rowan, Stokes County, um, I'm all in here, but, um, Iredell and Davidson. And, uh, I have concluded the same, pretty much the same findings in all of those communities. There might be some outlier stores, uh, but when you aggregate the crime data, county to county, the result is generally about the same. Dollar Generals do not appreciably raise the crime rate, uh, any more than the crime rate is in the surrounding area. So for instance, in Stokes County, when we did it for the Walnut Cove store, some of you are probably familiar with that, uh, that effort a couple of years back, uh, the, the crime numbers amounted to one and a half, or I'm sorry, a crime every two months, or slightly more than one crime every two months, or seven per year per store, with the overwhelming majority of those being larceny and shoplifting, which occur within the store and do not really affect the surrounding community. Uh, so the load, uh, from crime is actually very low. And we looked at that data over 25 months, and that was county CAD data. And so when you, when we, when you go to Rowan, when you go to Union, when you go to Davidson, you find the same story when you look at the data. It is on average about one, one crime every two months to one and a half crimes every two months, uh, per store. And most, the overwhelming majority are all shoplifting, larceny, and then followed by fraud. It's very, very low violent crime rate. When we did the, the analysis here in Stokes County before, we had four crimes at the eight Dollar Generals, four violent crimes at the eight Dollar Generals over a 25-month span. That's collectively 200 months, and there were four violent crimes with one of those, if you want to count it as a violent crime, being an indecent exposure. Really, it's not really counted as a violent crime, but it really didn't fit property crime category or anything else. So, so the facts really do speak for themselves. I can tell you that when I look at the CAD data, I clear out duplicate calls. I identify property versus and the, and the call type, and I always get, uh, an identifier, if, if it's not written in plain English, so I understand what the TEN code would be. Uh, and so I go through and I sort all of that data to make sure that I have all the data categorized. And then, and then we do the, uh, the analysis that basically looks at the rates, the rate per store, and the rate across all stores within the county. And, uh, and again, the result is the same. Uh, the, the rate of seven crimes per year per store, uh, is extraordinarily low, and my estimation is that it's not any more, uh, appreciable than the surrounding community. Happy to answer any questions? If they have. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Davenport, and, um, here to speak to you a little bit about the traffic. First of all, one of the things we'll mention, it said it wasn't, study wasn't available with the, uh, planning. Traffic study was not required for this site. And quite honestly, in working with these folks and Dollar Generals, they're such low traffic generators that traffic study, studies are not required. If you put a gas station in, then that would trip the numbers. But that's why NCDOT didn't require one, because it didn't meet the threshold. Now, the client asked us to go ahead and take a look at it because of the community, make sure that we could answer any questions that you guys may have. So that's, that's why we're standing here for you, to make sure that we've covered, uh, the, the issues that could come up. That being said, I think we can, can all agree, both folks said there's lots, you know, both sides said there are lots of Dollar Generals in the county. Well, that actually speaks to the traffic generation for this site. When you have a site, a land use like this, you're not gonna bring traffic from other regions just because there's other places where folks can go. Um, I'll give you an example of a traffic generator where people will drive along this trader joke. There are only a few of them. So if you're gonna go trader jokes, you're driving to Greensboro, you're driving to this, it's like, right? That's all you're gonna get. In fact, there's, that's about, I'm not even sure there's one in Greensboro. Nonetheless, those are the kind of places where you're gonna bring people from outside of the region. No one's driving 35 miles to go to a Dollar General if there's one just down the street. So most of the traffic that you will see at this site will either be local, or it will be what we call pass-by. So that's why these guys like to be on facilities like 772 and 311. Uh, if you're driving down the road on the way home, or on the way to school, or wherever you're going to drop your kids off, I need a gallon of milk, I need whatever. So that's what's called a pass-by trip. So it does bring traffic into the area, but this traffic is already on the roads. That makes sense to me. Um, we, uh, we did a traffic count. We looked at the, uh, level of service, how the intersection performs. Uh, we can, you know, agree with the DOT numbers that you came up with. Then you asked a question, Mr. Nicholson, about comparison of traffic volume. And if I remember, I think you said, uh, the U.S. 311 was around 3,900 vehicles a day or something like that. And, uh, NC-8 right outside of here is about 3,500, just to give you an idea of what it feels like. And then the, uh, 772 is around 11 or 1200, 1400. And the Shepherd's Mill is 900, almost 1,000. So you're not, you get a good idea of what we're talking about in terms of quantifying traffic. So we're not talking about, um, something that you're unfamiliar with in this region in terms of the volume that's on that road. Looking at the site plan, they've made the right decision, agreed with NC DOT to put their driveway on 772. That's away from 311 where the speeds are higher. Now, there is a stop sign, obviously, on 772, so you have to, to stop, so you're gonna be going at a slower speed. We can't speak to folks who wanna get out and violate traffic laws. I mean, anything you put out there, someone's gonna violate traffic laws. If there's people out there that's gonna drive or on stop signs, this land use has nothing to do with that. I mean, it's just, it's not gonna encourage or discourage. That's just something that people, it is a nice straight road, so folks go out there and drag strip, we might need to get some enforcement from the sheriff department or from highway control, but that's, that's not related, this particular land use. What we can say, though, is some very, uh, low-traffic-generating land use. What Dion has is actually, uh, we, uh, the folder there has the trip. There's a queue that, where the inner traffic backs up from the intersection. I think someone had mentioned something about queuing, so I did get a report to see what our model indicates as far as queues. So Dion, if you'll pass that out, if you can look at that. Uh, we did the AM and the PDP just to see what the maximum queues would be. Interesting point, when we did the traffic count, we actually put a, put a camera out there, it's technology now, so, poured it all in it, uh, which is available if somebody actually wanted to, to see what the traffic is. So you can say what it is, or I think this, I think that, you can't argue with the camera, right? So that is something that y'all wanted to review, we can provide it for you. But that information, plus adding in our traffic, gives you, and I see a copy of Dion, gives you the, the queues. This is the output from the model. So maybe a little unfamiliar, you see 311 is, uh, running diagonal from, and then there's 772 in the site access. Uh, you see the red lines, that represents, uh, where the traffic would be queued up. Obviously, there's no stops on 311, so the only queue would be if someone's making a left turn. Uh, the queues that could potentially be of any concern, uh, going north and southbound, you've got one to two vehicles that are queued. I actually sat out there this afternoon and observed rush hour, and that confirms what the model indicates, you know? I saw a maximum of three cars going north, going across Pine Hall, 772. That's not to say that there won't be an anomaly, that someone gets out there and they're, they have a problem with their car or whatever. That's not to say that there won't be any accidents out there. I mean, there's accidents, possible. But what we're saying is, observing this intersection and, and looking at it from the standpoint of how does it perform compared to other intersections throughout this county and throughout North Carolina, there's nothing out of the norm here. This is a rural intersection that has ample capacity to handle something of its size. I mean, if we were putting in another school, that would be a completely different conversation. If we were putting in a Sheetz gas station, that would be a completely different conversation. Those things generate multiples of traffic compared to this land. This is a very local land use. You don't see traffic, people rushing to this type of land use. So that's what the model confirms, and that's what our observation is. So I'll pause here and answer any questions that you may have, or wait till the end of the recitation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions so far? Okay, you can keep going. Let's keep going. We, there's no questions right now.
So, do they have copies of those reports, or? If you don't, that's a physical copy of them.
They were emailed, too.
Okay, well, now you have a paper.
Okay.
Um, that's essentially it. I mean, I don't know of anything else we want to add. I mean, I'm
Okay.
Be glad to answer any questions that you, that I didn't cover. Try to be, do these things objectively.
Will you speak to the driveway permit process for them? Who will approve the driveway permit and, and the process DOT will go through?
Well, yes. I mean, that's required for any land use like this. I mean, they're gonna have to get a driveway permit from NC DOT. And, uh, Mr. Jonathan says, said they've already spoken to NC DOT. They'll have to take that site plan to DOT. DOT will review it and make sure that everything related to that driveway access meets their standards. I will say that this study was conducted in accordance with their NC DOT standards as well, uh, so certainly they need to review it. They could. Um, but that's the process. It's a thorough review. It's not subjective, uh, and it's third-party. Uh, NC DOT is the owner of these roads, and they're responsible for the maintenance. And so therefore, they would be the ones that would require anything out there. And as, as you stated, they did not recommend any, uh, turn lanes, and so our report concurs with that. And we have not, you know, it's not like we're concluding Collusion or anything. That's just what they want, that's what we, our analysis comes as well. There's certain volume thresholds that you look for on a road for turn lanes. And Dion, what's that, is it 4,000? 4,000 is the number that you're generally looking for for ADT, and at 1,400, that's a third of that. That was just well below the threshold. We would still recommend turn lanes if we saw that there was a safety issue, site distance or anything like that. So just because it's not, the volume doesn't mean we wouldn't. But in this case, someone said, it's a straight road. Well, that's good. That means you can see both directions when you're pulling in and out of the driveway. So that, we've had other sites where it's not been, been like that, so we had to recommend. In this case, it's a straight road, and it's off the major facility of 311, so the driveway can be placed safely, and its location shown on the site.
Okay.
Just got one quick question. Uh, the, um, you're talking about site distance. When you come from Walnut Cove toward Madison at the intersection, you're gonna turn left to go in. If you decide to stop on the way and go in there, turn left, there's plenty of site distance down the road to make that a normal turn across the left, uh, turn, you know, across the lane?
You're talking about turning into the driveway or turning off?
Turn off of 311 into 772.
Yeah, 311, there's
The road's straight, both roads are straight. In that location.
It just kinda goes over a hill a little bit. It appears to me there's plenty of distance that you could see.
I mean, it, it's not a
The rest of the turns are, are, are better, yeah.
It's not an abnormal intersection. This is a rural area, and you got a lot of rolling terrain as you get up closer to this area. I like to ride my bikes up here by the way. My son, we ride a hangar. But, you know, this is not one of those roads. And you know, you know I'm talking about. There's a lot of roads that are rolling and have some challenging site distance chapter areas. This is not one of them. This is black, pancake.
Let me answer my question.
Okay. Any other board members have questions for Mr. Davenport? Okay. Thank you.
I just wanna summarize, ask if there are any other questions of any of the experts. Again, Derek's here, our engineer. Um, I wanted to also ask, I know you heard some folks come to the mic and speak in support, but I wanted, uh, the commission to hear or see the number of people who are here in support. And if I can ask those folks to stand up who are here in support of the rezoning.
From Starks County. That are from Stokes County. What about the Stokes County people standing up that are not for it, that live in Stokes County, that live beside it? That's us. We're the county taxpayers.
Look at the people sitting down. Dollar General.
This ain't our fine law, though.
So you can see there are a number
You don't live beside it, either.
You can see there are a number of people here in support. There's obviously a number of people here
Who are not supporting.
Um, but I want to, to, to ask the, the, the board tonight to consider these things. We've spoken to the traffic issue. John is a 30-plus-year veteran, uh, in the traffic industry. He's here to answer any questions. I hope he's answered those questions. Laura has spoken to the planning question, and the need for this to be a commercial node, and this is the exact kind of use that your long-range plan is calling for. We spoke to the regulatory compliance. David mentioned that the sewer system is going to be a standard system. And Dollar General and Terramore will be required to satisfy all regulatory aspects as they build this project. Uh, and then finally, while there is not universal neighborhood support, there is neighborhood support for this project. And so because of those reasons, we'd ask that y'all consider and approve this rezoning application. Here to answer any other questions.
Okay. Do board members have any questions at this time? I have one, but I'll let y'all go first, if anybody else has one.
Go first, I want to. And you wanna go first, Ronnie? You wanna go first?
Go ahead, Ronnie.
I need, uh, I need about a five-minute recess to check on something, uh, and I'm gonna need my county manager with me. Call us, May.
Okay. Uh, before we do that, let me ask my question, 'cause I might forget it when I come back. I've had a lot going on this week. Um, and I, Mr. From Terramore, Daniel, I know you're Daniel, but I cannot think of your last name, I'm sorry.
Daniel's a whole lot easier.
It is, it is a whole lot easier. So my question is, I think one of the people who spoke brought this up, um, they were talking about emergency entrances and, or exits, or whatever, being blocked. And I think we've all been in Dollar Generals where we know they're short-staffed and have a problem getting, uh, all the stock out. But, um, and I don't, I know what happened in Rockingham County, 'cause I don't keep up with Rockingham County, but I have been told that because there have been, um, concerns expressed about, about this in other stores, and maybe that one was shut down to give them time to get all the stock put away, um, that there were teams of people in districts now that y'all had put together to go to different store, to, to address that issue.
We've been working on that.
Okay.
So, uh, I'm gonna unpack a couple
Go ahead.
...parts of, of what you were asking about.
Okay.
So, so obviously, it's not, uh, it's not unusual in terms of this day and age that there's, there's staffing issues. And so obviously, they suffer just like anybody. And, and so they've got a twofold issue. You've got fewer people that are either coming to work, that are, that are showing up for work, and then you've got high demand. So, so great for Dollar General that there's high demand, and Terramore from the standpoint that, that you've got stock that doesn't get put up timely as it should. We dealt with this specifically in Rowan County, I'm gonna use that as an example. And, and we actually met with, uh, with the county commissioner there, and we were talking about ways to improve, because, you know, this is, uh, this is across the board, and, and it's not the first time that we've had that happen, especially where they've had to close the store down. And, and I mean, like, it's twofold. You've got a life safety issue, and you've got the fact that the stuff needs to be put up. And so we actually had someone from corporate come and meet with us, meet with the fire inspector, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, the fire chief. And, and we discussed their plans for how they were gonna do that, and then it kind of leads into, like, that they are kind of piloting, uh, ways in order to do that, and, and there's even jobs that they're, they're trying to promote for that type of stuff. Um, but, but because that, we're Terramore, not Dollar General, I don't wanna speak out of turn in terms of corporate-wide, how that they're, they're doing that, so
With respect.
It's kind of like, yes, there's
They're working on it.
They're working on it, but, but, but again, you know, especially like this is televised, they, they may say like, wait a second, stay in your lane.
You're not Dollar General, you're Terramore. I got you. I got you. But I, I do think that from what I've heard and other, you know, that there, that there are things in the works to try to address that problem, 'cause it is, I think, widespread, and I think it's driven by the fact that it is hard to, um, to get people to work right now, and, um, it's not like they're open at night to stock like Walmart or whatever. So I, I do understand that, but that's the only question I had. But we can take that five-minute recess, if that's okay with everybody? Okay. All right, we'll stay in recess for five minutes. All right, we'll stay in recess for five minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, we'll continue with wrapping up your presentation.
Absolutely. I think Mr. Minnott may have had a question.
No, but I will say at this time, Madam Chair, I've contacted our attorney, and due to circumstances beyond my control tonight, I'm gonna have to recuse myself. I had the county manager with me when I contacted our county attorney, and I'm gonna have to recuse myself from voting on this particular item.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
We had a lady come over here tonight and was showing pictures of one of the existing Dollar Generals in the area, and the grass was real tall, kind of something like there might have been some trash and stuff around the area. So, nobody wants to see it, even with neighbors. I don't wanna pass on neighbor that's got stuff laying out everywhere. What is Dollar General doing to make sure that these contractors who are asset management companies, wherever they are overseeing these, to get that corrected?
You wanna feel that, Dan?
Yeah, sure.
No, this unfortunately has come up before as well. Well, one of the things that I see, just like on the residential side, whenever you've got owners who are absentee owners, because we no longer own that store, we developed that one, but that one was sold a year later. Whenever we've got absentee owners, they are, they don't seem to have the relationship with counties, with those communities, and the accountability is a big factor. I mean, obviously, you know, we rely on the tenant and their management in order to do it, and whenever you've got short staffing, it comes into play as well. You know, that they're not in same communication, and that's also something that we have talked to management about, because, I mean, like, that's their first impression before even customers come through. It's bad business. And that is one of the things that they're trying to revamp their relationship with, because you brought up vendors, because obviously, they don't come out, I mean, Dollar General isn't the one out there doing the landscaping. They hire local professionals, and they've been having a hard time with those professionals coming in, doing what they're supposed to, because they're being paid, but they're not showing up and doing the thing. And we also have to have better relationships with the code enforcement, because if we have the code enforcement actually send letters to the owners, that's been the solution that we found hasn't been addressed. And I mean, like, I know this is beyond the scope of this discussion, but a lot of times what happens, and this also is true with the fire department, whenever there's code and safety issues, they will go in there and they'll talk to a staff member, because of course, the thought is, is that I'm just gonna go talk to the first person I see. Well, a lot of times, the staff doesn't know who to contact. They don't know who's accountable for doing that property or that piece of the maintenance. And so, it doesn't get passed off timely, it doesn't get passed off sometimes at all. And I've found if the code enforcement is in communications or has contact information for the owners, you let them know, I promise you, they get to the right people at Dollar General and not the Terramore. So, it's probably more of a procedural issue, and I mean, like, because we've seen it and we've fixed it, it's an easy fix, but unfortunately, until it comes out in conversation like this, and especially whenever the public comes and talks about it, if we can have better communication between the public, between the county, the enforcement, it's handled.
And I mean, I understand, because we've heard it a few times here tonight, everybody's understaffed. I understand that, I'm understaffed as well. And it's taken a lot longer to get materials in, it's taken a lot longer to get the jobs, getting things taken care of, and I understand that. But especially if this store ends up being built right there, is there's like a number or something that will be posted somewhere in the store, that if a citizen sees something that they need to complain about, they can call this number, talk to somebody, not just machine leaving a message, not getting back in touch, because, you know, if Dollar General's being built here, you're now part of that community. You're now representing that community. Nobody wants to see junk. And I've been very blessed with the one back over here in Lawsville that's built closest to me. They've actually kept it right clean. It's actually always lit up. Every now and then going there, and there might be one aisle blocked up because stuff came in, they just got busy doing other things and ain't got it up. I understand, that don't bother me that much. But is it the same way with the rest of the county? No. But one thing that these citizens right here is for tonight, you got some against it, some for it, but one thing, if it does go through, they wanna, if it's gonna be there, they wanna see it nice. They don't wanna see it junky and everything else. So, I wanna make sure these citizens will have somebody they can reach if there's problems going on.
Yeah, probably, but the simple way, because they're the applicant, you know, and we can make sure that our information is posted and it's available. They will contact us, we'll get a handle. And I mean, like, and I'm happy to pass out my business card, it's got my personal cellphone on it, so...
Oh, bless you.
Like, I mean, like, we'll get a handle, because, you know, our business depends on it.
Okay.
At the end of the day, we want good relationships with the community, and I realize that everybody doesn't want the Dollar General. I respect that. But what we're trying to do is make it good for the entire community, even for the ones who don't wanna shop here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, are there any more questions?
I have some comments I'd like to make, Madam Chair, and then I think a few questions after that.
All right.
First, I'd like to thank all the folks that came out tonight and expressed your opinion one way or the other on this thing. That's what we need is information to make decisions with. I have a particularly strong connection with Pine Hall, having worked with Ron Petrie when I was county manager here to get the community building and the medical facility put in out there. Many hours of involvement doing that, and I met and got to know a lot of people out there when I was doing that, working on that facility and getting that put in. So, I have a kind of a soft spot in my heart for Pine Hall. It's underserved in lots of ways. It was underserved medically, and we've taken care of that problem, and the community building also addresses that. The, whenever I ran for commissioner, I told people I was gonna make decisions, best I could determine, fact-based decisions based on meeting with and hearing the facts from both sides on any issue. And of course, that's exactly what we're doing here tonight. My normal process on zoning issues like this would be, almost automatically support the planning board decision. I think I've done it in just about every one since I've been elected, every planning board decision, but most all those were unanimous, and this one was not. This one was a split vote down the middle, which caused me to wanna investigate deeper than I normally would. So, I've attempted to take, apply an analytical type of process and analysis to this decision, because not everybody's gonna be happy whenever it's made, whichever way it goes. But my decision, my only motive is to make a fair decision based on the facts as best I can understand them. It will be, you know, be best served Pine Hall and the greater community of Stokes County as well, so. With the split vote by the planning board, as I mentioned, I decided I'd sort of do some of my own research on this. First thing I did is look at the planning director's recommendations, and you've heard him go through most of that tonight. The planning director has recommended this for approval, based on the fact that it meets all the requirements that he's looking for within our statutes, regulations, and so forth. Other information that I evaluated from the planning director is, first of all, the site is suitable for commercial development, based on the existing development patterns in the area, and, you know, there's several other businesses there within a two-mile radius is where that comes from. The retail store would increase property tax, it would definitely do that, property tax revenue, that is, to the county, and it would also increase sales tax to the county, as was mentioned a couple of different ways here tonight. Retail store would create new jobs in the county. And as I mentioned, with these other businesses, there are six other commercial districts or commercial-type activities within a two-mile radius of this facility. The planning board, I went back and looked at that, of course, when I got my package. The planning board, there appear to be two major concerns. One was the traffic, and one was community acceptance. I don't, based on the information we've been provided, which is done by experts and seems factual to me, I don't think we have a traffic issue there that I'm worried about. So, then that goes down to community acceptance. The, as was mentioned, the project is consistent with the Stokes County 2035 plan. We have these nodes around the county that were put in that plan, and this one fits perfectly into that, this intersection does, as was pretty well described by the lady back there from the planning side of the house. As required by our zoning regulations, also a public information meeting was held out on the site. I think some of you are, probably a lot of you are here that went to that. That was kind of my first disappointment when I went through the package that was handed out. There were 26 people that attended that, and only eight people commented, or had comments recorded in the minutes. And there were, I think, two or three for the store or the development, and then there were a few more against it, and then there were, well, a couple more that just had concerns. So, that really was not very helpful, so I kind of discarded that. As I mentioned earlier, I got to know a lot of people out in Pine Hall when I was working on that other facility out there, and I go out there and play golf pretty regular and things like that. So, I decided I would just do my own survey and try to figure out what the support was within the community. So, I called a lot of people, I got some emails, both pro and con. I went out and drove around twice out there, stopped and talked to people, stopped and talked to businesses. I was out there this morning and actually talking to one of those businesses. And my conclusion from that, from my own survey, I guess you would call it, is that there's pretty strong support for the store out there, much more so than against it. I don't know if it's come up tonight, I think somebody mentioned it, but I did some research, and I don't think there, and this is a question maybe that you guys can address, I don't think there's any proof that these stores have a negative impact on property values. A real concern I have with this one, and somebody made a comment tonight that I wanna maybe either challenge or disagree with, but I'm afraid if the board turns this down, then we're gonna make this man's property somewhat unusable, because if we turn down a project that meets all the requirements that we have in our county government for it to be approved, then I'm not sure when somebody else comes along and wants to do something else there, how we're gonna approve that. And that would definitely be a precedent, and one of the people tonight mentioned, if somebody else came in and built us, I forgot what the examples were, some other kind of business or whatever, he might be for it, but he's against this particular project. Well, that makes no sense to me. And I think we would be, we would possibly, I don't know, there may be a legal challenge to doing something like that. So, that really concerns me though, so I think, I think it could, I don't think you could build a house there. Most of the places in that area that I'm aware of won't perk for a house, or if they do, I mean, it's a big challenge to try to get a house. It doesn't seem like a place you would, you'd ever wanna build a dwelling to live in. It's definitely a commercial-type place, and so, then when you start picking and choosing the winners and losers of who can go there, who can't, that really kind of disturbs me a little bit. I believe, there was one of the comments in the public meeting about some impact on the school. I don't think it would have any negative impact on the school. I think it would, and some, one of the speakers mentioned, I think it would give an opportunity for people like at Veal and Copper, or at the other business there, at the medical facility, or people that have rented the community building and forgot something that they needed for their get-together. It'd be a very convenient thing for them to run over there and get it. And, I mean, I use the one in Lawsonville, and it's very convenient whenever you forgot something or when you need something. So, I think, I think somebody mentioned the convenience is a big deal for the residents, and I agree with that comment. Now, to a couple of questions right quick. First of all, can, there's a picture we have of the building of what it's gonna look like. It looks different than the other Dollar Generals I've seen, the way the entrance or something looks. And then the handout we received that says it's gonna be a DG Fresh, or I think you said the first one in the county, is that correct? I think that really, that's kind of a big deal when you add the produce and other things to it, that that's the one thing, that one weakness of them that I've seen, that they don't have that stuff. So, I'm kind of intrigued by the fact that we would be putting the first one in Pine Hall that has the fresh produce and so forth. But my bigger question, I guess, is, is that the shape of the building, that picture we were given, or would it be, or would it be open for the community to give input if they wanted a different type of building? You know, you see, there's one, somebody sent me a picture of this weekend, it had a front porch on it, I think in the mountain area maybe, or whatever. So, if somebody, if you could address that, of how much flexibility there is in maybe looking at different designs.
Usually, what we do is during the community meeting that we do, that's something that we usually bring a couple of options. You know, that way, we get some community input, you know, in terms of what's appropriate, what's not, what's why, you know, what changes can we make? You know, at this stage, probably the most feasible way to do it is, yes, we definitely would be more than...